Okay, next.
Any questions on process? Same thing we've been doing for a couple of years.
Thank you.
Lays it out. Let's see, 92 North Main Street. Through the persistence of Mr. Clark and other members of the Board of Selectmen and our diligent staff working in the permitting department and our building commissioner and after review of our survey team which included our fire chief and a disinterested party, Mr. Walsh, Tom Walsh, that they identified that that building should be demolished and it eventually was. So as you can see that that red building has now been taken down, which has been an eyesore and more importantly, it was an unsafe structure that...
And there were chemical barrels behind it.
There were chemical barrels.
Has there been an inspection of that site to ensure that all chemical barrels have been removed?
There has, from, that's a DEP responsibility. It is a registered site with DEP, so they have certain requirements they're supposed to follow. I cannot tell you whether DEP has done that or not, but certainly that's something that anyone can inquire with DEP to ask them.
There's no way we could have somebody say, yo, go up and look at it and like let the DEP know that there's still some barrels here?
Have someone on staff alert the DEP?
Yeah, let me, I'll talk to...
Short answer would be yes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That's what I was just gonna say.
That's the answer I think Alan and I were looking for there.
Yes, yes.
Is the DEP aware that work has been done there?
Uh, that I don't know, but they're about ready to find out.
Well, I think they should have been informed prior, but whatever.
Um, any other questions on that? Again, that's, that's, you know, one of those unsafe structures that, you know, although we weren't able to pass a town meeting, you know, the appropriate regulations we were looking for, we did use this through the court process, which is a longer process, but it eventually did get taken down. Route 44 development, the developer is currently working with their MIPA team on preparing the draft environmental impact report. They've also hired multiple subcontractors. VHB is the consulting firm that's taking the lead. They've also hired firms to analyze their water and their wastewater needs, which under current technology is actually, we're actually finding out that we may not need to expand the North Carver Water District beyond its current capacity, but that's something that's still being reviewed.
What does that mean?
That means that...
Oh, that the way it's constituted now, it may be able to meet the needs of the new facility?
Correct. And how water's recycled on site and gray water for toilets, which is actually clean water, but it's considered gray water, but it's actually clean and the water you get out of the ground. But that's a whole nother story.
Well, the groundwater up there is contaminated. I think that's what Michael's referring to.
So that's being reviewed. We've also, I've entered into an agreement with SERPED. SERPED is responsible for overseeing the regional EDA grants from the Economic Development Administration. They're federal grants. With that, they're going to move forward in preparing the grant application for probably somewhere between a million and $2 million for off-site transportation improvements and other utility improvements. So SERPED is going to take care of putting that together and since they are the conduit, it's kind of the proper way that you do this and you're just hiring their staff to put this together, which was $6,500. So it's not a lot of money, but it accelerates the piece. We did have the regional EDA rep down, that I had her down about two months ago, I believe it was, for a tour of the site. So they're fully aware of the site and it is on their radar screen and it fits within their perfect way that they try to fund these types of projects. So that is moving forward as well.
Do we get reimbursed at $6,500?
No, that's, I'm sorry, yes, we will get reimbursed from the developer for the $6,500. So it's no cost to the town. Update on the Carver Housing Authority. I think people may have read in the paper that the, there's a new executive director at the Carver Housing Authority. The previous executive director did resign about a month and a half ago. I have met with two of the board members in the last week who've been very accommodating because the Housing Authority still owes the town about $75,000 for putting in the Green Sand Plus filtration system, which was the Housing Authority's share of that. The chairman of the board was able to sign that contract and now he's forwarded to the state for them to countersign it and then for them to fund it, but that's been a lot of progress that they've been moving forward with. So again, you did read something in the paper. There, the executive director did resign. We have a new person there. I have yet to meet that individual, but I do understand that she will be looking to set up a meeting in the very near future. And also, just for clarity, is the Carver Housing Authority is a separate governmental body that the town is not really responsible for? We're not responsible for any cost overruns or any of their issues? They're strictly overseen by the state and they have their own board of directors that are appointed and one member's appointed by the, by the governor. Update on the proposed staffing modifications for the planning department. At a previous meeting, I had proposed a solution where we were going to have the, the health agent pick up more responsibility and while it's, there was anticipation that our current consultant doing planning may, may be on the verge of retiring from his full-time position. For a variety of reasons, both of those things didn't work out, so we have gone forward and advertised the position. We received a bunch of resumes in last week and we just haven't had a chance to take a look at that to hire a full-time planning director for the department. So just want to let you know that, you know, I presented one thing back in June and now we've changed paths back to what it originally was. Let's see. I think I want to appreciate it. You wanna talk about this? Please.
Is that electric personality of the ladies?
As your new HR coordinator, we have decided to do our first appreciation for our employees. So we're going to do a staff appreciation breakfast. There were funds set aside at town meeting for, I think it was called incentive funds. We will be using the Carver Fire Department facility. Michael will be doing the cooking. And employees of the town will, are invited to come and the town hall will be open. We will have people here. If anybody does come in, this will be Tuesday, October 3rd from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So anyone who comes in during that time, there will be people here to help them or take messages and at 10:00 a.m. when the employees return, we'll be able to help those people.
Nice idea.
Interesting, how did you do that?
So you're cooking?
I'm gonna have some help. I don't, I don't know the...
Is there something funny about that? Am I missing something? We're just concerned about the health and welfare of the employees.
I would hope that, you know, if anybody from the Board of Selectmen could maybe at least stop by to say thank you. I unfortunately have a doctor's appointment in Boston that day. However, I know someone who's recently retired...
He's driving around in a...
Who's looking, who's looking for something to do. Just to, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we have somebody there that, you know, can thank the employees.
We'll make sure Dave gets an invitation.
Oh, yes. I'm always looking for helpers. Actually, I think he'd be good at serving.
Yes, Mr. Walsh has volunteered to do cleanup.
Say what?
Yeah, I was thinking the managers to serve.
Well, we're, we're gonna take care of that.
Working on it?
Yeah, we're gonna take care of that. A couple of other updates, just real briefly, from Mr. Walsh. He just wants to remind everybody, we're having the annual nuclear preparedness training, which is going to take place on September 20th from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Oh, where?
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
Basement.
Could you let him know that I will attend?
Okay.
Does anybody else on the board?
Not sure.
Robertson will. Mr. Clark?
I'll have to check my schedule.
Me too.
Six to 10, did you do something?
Okay, two definites, three checking.
Okay, Tom, you got that? Tom watches.
He's at the Red Sox game tonight.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Oh, shoot, we actually have to send him a note tomorrow. All right. The second thing he asked me to bring to your attention is the Governor, Baker's proclaimed September to be emergency preparedness month. Now with that, he wants us to recognize that Carver is a storm-ready community certified by the National Weather Service, an emergency management readiness, you know, for dealing with any type of tropical storms that may come up. So we are actually classified as a storm readiness community. Tied into that, we have been monitoring what's happening down, down, down south with the hurricane that's forming, that potentially or most likely hit Florida.
Irma.
Irma. And so we are, we are monitoring that daily. The way Tom has it set up is that once we're five days out from an impending storm that's going to hit us, they get into a different sequence. So in day five, they do X. If it's still gonna hit us in day four, then they ramp up more services that are being put in, into line. If it's still slated to hit us from the forecast on day three, then it just exponentially grows for those five days in order to prepare and get ready for that. So he wanted me to make sure you are all aware of that.
And he does work very closely with town administrator, fire chief, and police chief on this household.
We're also working with a, a road off of Sylvia Street, Silva Street?
Silva.
Silva Street and that apparently has some encroachment that's been done by some private property owners, actually putting some temporary structures on this side road. So we're, we're trying to deal with that. In addition to that, we have a auto salvage yard called Auto Gator Salvage Yard, which is located at 35 Silva Street. And currently they are, they must have, Mr. Woods and I went to the site, they must have about 200, 300 vehicles on there, but they're currently unregistered right now in the town as having a class three license or any type of salvage facility. So we're in the process of doing some research on that, which is also encroaching on that side street as well.
Oh my God, I was just gonna bring that up. You can bring it up this time, cause I sound like a broken record.
So I just wanted to bring the Selectmen's attention to that item as well.
So you know what I'm talking about?
No, I was talking about this one.
Oh.
Do you have another one?
You wanna bring it up? No. Alan, you can bring it up.
Bring it up during Selectman notes.
Okay.
And I believe, that's all I have this evening for town administrator comments.
Okay, and how, what time, what time we, 8:45? I have only 15 minutes lined, scheduled, not bad. Okay, Board of Selectmen, update.
Would you like to go first, Ms. Hewens?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. So on the topic of hazards and hurricanes and so on, the, it's the 2015, 2016 hazard mitigation plan that Tom Walsh, our emergency management director, and myself and a number of other people on that team helped to update and got approved by FEMA. That plan has, as part of it, what Tom kind of calls his hurricane packets. And I told him that I would let everyone know, these are, the plan is public itself, but these particular hurricane preparedness packets are available at town hall, the library, and some of the manufactured home parks. I couldn't catch all he said because he was at the Red Sox game and it was a little noisy. So, but just so, just so folks know, the town is really well-prepared. Tom, Tom and crew really see to that.
If I could just add on to that, just because, you know, there may be, we don't have any that come up this year. Sooner or later, we're gonna have one. So it's good for people to, you know, this is a good time since hurricanes are in the news, to go ahead and get this information because, you know, have their own hurricane plan, individual hurricane plans. So you're not scrambling around at the last minute, you know, oh my God. Because generally if a storm's coming up where, you know, Florida's got four, five days notice, we may only really have one or two because they're generally moving up the coast at anywhere from 35 to 45 miles an hour. So they can get from Cape Hatteras to here in a day, which doesn't give you much time.
Yeah. Was, if my memory serves me, did Tom Walsh mention that when the nuclear plant shuts down, that we get a lot of funding from there for this emergency system that we have in place? And if my memory is serving me correctly, should we kind of plan in the budget for the future? I don't know when this is all gonna happen, but it's just something to think about because he does have such a rock-solid program in place.
So yes, Tom's been talking to me about that for the last four years, pretty much on a monthly basis. So yes, we do receive a bulk of the funding through energy. That being said, a lot of that funding is going to tie it into the nuclear component, which really is a more robust system than what our normal response would be. So there are plans in place that when that funding goes away to, if you will, provide some additional offsetting fund from the town to supplement the work that Tom does or Tom's replacement in 15 years when he retires. And he told me 10, but I'm trying to get 15 out of them to address that. So yes, we are aware of that and we would make accommodations for that.
Thank you.
Sarah, anything else? I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's quite all right. Thank you, that's it.
I don't have anything tonight, nothing.
Peace, gentlemen.
Just that it's good to be back.
Mr. Robertson?
I wanted to talk about the hurricane coming up, but it was well-mentioned, well-played out, so that's all I had, Al.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He's very cranky right now.
Yeah, I know, cause he didn't win his vote.
He didn't get his way, so he's very...
One, I have, excuse me, was it my time?
Please continue, Mr. Clark.
The streetlights in town, do we, have we shifted those over to LEDs or are they still traditional bulbs?
You'll have to talk to the streetlight committee because that's above my pay scale.
Who's on the streetlight committee?
That would be Mr. Robertson and Ms. Hewens.
Well, no, you're talking about the streetlight, the new, they're on the new streetlights. Are they, they're on another streetlight committee as well?
Are you talking about Broadway out here?
I'm talking about throughout the town, all the streetlights that we have. I, I saw where a town recently converted all their streetlights to LEDs and the savings is substantial to the town. The first-year savings almost pays for the cost of the replacement bulbs.
So this, so this is a topic that I have as one of the goals and objectives because this was addressed a long time ago. Not so much that particular issue, which is not a bad idea, but actually determining with the safety departments, which ones could actually be turned off.
Off, turned more off?
Turned off.
Dark as it is.
Yes, turned off.
Well, we'll have to discuss that. But anyway, if, if it turned out that we could run them at a third of the expense, you could actually add streetlights to dangerous intersections, but...
That's gonna be a topic, that's gonna be a topic for a future meeting.
Ron, the idea was not to turn them off at dangerous intersections?
No, I understand.
Okay.
But I'm saying we could add light. Anyway, who then would know whether or not we have made the changes to the streetlights?
So we have, over the years, looked at this three times and our light fixtures are not compatible for LEDs, so we'd have to replace the entire light fixture tied into...
If you had an answer for this, why did you defer off to the streetlight committee?
Again, it's up to the streetlight committee. Alls I'm gonna say is the last time we had an estimate was over $100,000. But I'll leave it to the streetlight committee to determine the color, the shade, the hue...
Did you, did you also determine what the net savings would be after installation?
Moving on. I would have to defer to the...
Not on the agenda.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll follow up on this separately if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right, I would also like to ask that anybody that's interested in serving on the cable advisory committee, because we are going to reconstitute that committee. Most of the people that were on it eight years ago have actually left town for whatever reason. So I don't know if it was the experience of being on the cable advisory committee that led them to that decision, but we do have to get going on that. We're two years out, we had to get going anyway, but now we've had some increased urgency as a result of Comcast and what they're suggesting the new deal is in terms of providing service to the town for the municipal loop and so forth. So anybody that's interested in serving on the cable advisory committee, that basically comes into being for about two or three years until we get the contract done and then disappears for a while, please contact the Selectmen's office and maybe if you have any background, provide any background of your interest and skillset. And Mr. Mahoney, we obviously already have as a volunteer to participate in that committee. And Wyndham Road is back in the news because it has, it's almost as if we never talked to them.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah.
It's worse.
So it's...
Is that U-Haul truck still sitting there?
You know, it's, it's very fluid situation over there. You know, you drive by at different times and there's something new there and so we really gotta just get to the finish line on this thing and get this determined. So if we could perhaps, I don't know, what is it, the building commissioner would go down and take a look and then report back and...
The Conservation Commission could too, because it's within 200 feet of...
Yeah, well, it's...
Perrings Brook down there.
Yeah.
He keeps the garage doors open at this point, just showing...
So that's kind of a, maybe it's a safety hazard.
It's brutal.
That's all I have.
And talking about different places, how are we on Center Street?
With the mulch?
With the mulch slash illegal sawmill activity, whatever.
Yep. I know that the building commissioner had contacted them last week or was trying to. I don't know what the status of that is, but I know he was reaching out to them.
Just don't want that one to fall through the cracks. On other topics, for me, if you've been driving around town, you've seen the banners up, you've seen the little signs. This is the recruitment time for your fire department every late summer and early fall. We take applications. If you're looking to go ahead and wanting to serve in a function of the town, the fire department's a fantastic way of doing it. Applications are accepted through October. All you have to do is swing by dispatch seven days a week, cause during 8:30 to 4:30 when dispatch is open, they will have the applications there. Once all the applications are in, the chief will go ahead and schedule a general knowledge test, which is scored by an outside firm. From that, they whittle it down for interviews, the chief checks his budget, see how many we can afford to put on, and then there'll be another round of interviews. It's the way you keep the department fresh. I don't know if you've seen some articles around, but I've seen them in the Globe and whatnot. A lot of towns are having a hard time keeping their call and volunteer fire departments running and it's a credit to Chief Weston, Deputy Jermaine, Deputy Jesse Boyle, and all the officers and the men and women of that department that keeps it going. But you gotta constantly have an influx. And I last, I checked with the chief, I believe they've had 15 applications taken out and I'm not sure how many have come back. So if you have the chance to do that, if you'd like to do it, serve, it's a lot of hard work, but it's really worth it. Also, there was a thing in Facebook and I went down and looked at it. Do we know what the cable is? It almost looks like a Verizon cable that runs down the length of Savory's Ave. They're on poles that are broke, leaning, there's places where this cable is actually coming almost, you know, like within five feet of the ground. Can we find out who owns that and what would happen if that cable came down? Because not only is it an eyesore on the first divided highway in America, it's, you know, it could be, eventually be a safety hazard, you know, if we get one, it wouldn't even take a tropical system to come up. I mean, it's really in bad shape. So if we could find out, one, who owns it? Two, if it actually needs to still be there? If it doesn't, can we get them to take it down?
Savory Avenue?
Yeah.
Sorry?
You know what that cable is?
No, I don't.
Like I say, it looks like a Verizon cable. It's apparently, it's one of the big ones and it's just a single cable that runs the entire length, then goes back out to the poles again. It goes into Savory at the, from a pole at the north into Savory's, goes down to Savory's, then comes back out onto Main Street again.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
And I think that's it. So we'll move on. Chapter 61A. This is 61 land for, ah, we have someone here, yes. Please go ahead and give us your name, sir, and who you're representing and into the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Rich Cirky. I'm an attorney in Plymouth and I'm here in behalf of the A.D. Makepeace Company with respect to a parcel of land on the westerly side of Federal Road, which is the site of a proposed ground-mounted solar facility. We sent notice in August, late August, and I appreciate the speedy hearing that you're holding tonight, to remove the land from chapter 61A status and to seek the declination by the board of the right to purchase the property. It is the withdrawal of approximately 57 acres on the westerly side of Federal Road. It has received a negative determination of applicability from the Conservation Commission and it's received the necessary approvals from both the zoning board and the planning board. And in both cases, those approvals were extended for an additional six months in order to resolve certain regulatory issues governing ground-mounted solar facilities, but those have been resolved. So we're here to seek your declination of your right to purchase. We've determined through the assessor's office that if the land is removed, the, the rollback tax will be nearly $42,000 to the town. And assuming that the, the right to purchase is declined, we will then pay that money and seek a partial release from the Board of Assessors so that the title will be clear and development can begin.
Take a motion first before we go into discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Wouldn't it be a motion to decline?
Yeah, it's a motion to...
A motion to decline, I apologize.
Mrs. Clark, you still seconding?
Thank you.
All right, discussion. Go ahead.
So I want you to know how much I appreciate the landowner using this property in that particular way. It's a very special piece of property and I think the solar arrays will allow for it to remain a special piece of property, habitat and so on. So just so you know.
I'll transmit that message. And we, we were able to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow the solar fields on three lots to be clustered together, thereby saving trees that would otherwise have to come down if the 200-foot setback requirement from lot lines were adhered to. So this is possible because of the cooperation of a number of boards and committees.
Other comments, questions?
It's good business.
Is this upland or is this bog or a combination thereof?
Well, it's...
If it's 61A, it would be a bog, wouldn't it?
61A.
It could be upland, but it could be upland.
It could be upland or bog.
I didn't know that.
Necessary and related.
It is upland to my...
It is upland?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other questions, let's go to the vote. All those in favor of declining to exercise the option to purchase land under the provisions of general law, chapter 61A, section 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Five, zero, unanimous.
Thank you very much and hello to all of you whom I know and like to see.
The long anticipated, but haven't got to it, establishing the goals and objections, obje, objections, objectives for the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. obje- objections, objectives for the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. And I wish to thank Ms. Hewens, Mr. Clark, and Ms. Marone for their input. I looked at it and it's like, okay, do I need to add anything else? But I think through that whole list, I think we have enough to work with. So do we want to go with BOS, Board of Selectmen Goals first and then go to Town Administrator What's your pleasure? Because I'm trying to be inclusive.
Let's go with the Board of Selectmen first.
All right.
And I think normally we say, let's not overwhelm ourselves. We should pick three, four, five as reasonable objectives to move on and reasonably can affect over the course of the year.
I wish Ms. Hewens was here because I might need her to...
Sarah's first one more of a task than a objective.
Yeah, yeah, I would, to me...
I look at that in light of the news we just got tonight, I think that would, since we don't know what the shape of the department's going to be going forward, you can't do a post-mortem when it's still in flux.
Right.
Well, plus the fact that the Town Administrator should be, as the Administrator of the town, frequently reviewing how each department is performing and what its strengths and weaknesses are and what it needs to get better. So whether, you know, oh, good, here she comes.
We're doing the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives.
And we're going under BO, the Board of Selectmen, and so we're just discussing, you know, and I'm glad you're here to give a little more insight as to what you mean by a detailed post-mortem. Although you...
That's actually a quote from our former town planner, Marlene. She suggested that we do that and she used those words, meaning what happens after you've done what just happened? You put on a play, all the actors get together later and they do a post-mortem. What did we do wrong? What did we do right?
Okay, so...
Reflect the situation.
Right. But to me, that's something more that, you know, would be handled by the Town Administrator to get with the folks.
Well, actually, a long time ago, this board voted that Ron and I would come up with a, some kind of anonymous survey that town employees could take. Do you recall that, Ron?
No.
Yeah, that was about, I don't know, three years ago?
I mean, I, well, I remember discussing with survey. I don't think I'd ever go along with anonymous, but...
You know, that people who fill it out wouldn't fill it out if they had to give their names.
No, I understand the significance of that.
But I didn't want to go into it without you here to explain, talk about it.
And my thought on it, Sarah, was some of the ideas are great, but I'm looking at this more of a task to be done in term, in not a goal and objective. I think, like, your police study building committee is, like, to me, that would be more of a goal and objective to get that going, but it's just my opinion. There's so many good ones here.
I think all departments are important.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, that's true.
No, not saying they're not, but to create a survey, to me, is, there's so many, I think we should be looking at the bigger picture, that's all, with the fight.
My first take on that is simply after Michael tells us tonight that we're in flux in terms of we were going to have one organization now, it's going to be a different organization, that we almost have to wait until that's in place before we can do something.
And that's fine. And this is just one of my, what I think is a goal and objective, particularly since we voted on it at one of our meetings with Jeff Nuttig about, I don't know, two, three years ago, and you and I were going to come up with one of these surveys at the end of that November.
I'm not saying you're wrong.
I know I'm right. Yeah, not that...
We're the same age.
So, it's up to you guys.
I think the streetlight policy is, you know, it's, I think it's something we should do. I guess I'm getting into the weeds. Is it something the Board of Selectmen should do or is it something that we should simply task, you know, our operations department to look into?
Well, we have a policy on just about everything else, but, I mean, my Town Administrator Goal and Objective Number Two was to work in conjunction with all safety departments to determine, I mean, again, this was already done years ago and just never really implemented. You know, we sat down with the police chief, the fire chief, the DPW, head of DPW. I'm not sure if we included the emergency management director, I think we must have, asking them their opinions and there was a draft policy that came up and then it just sort of went by the wayside.
See, I remember the times that we get into the streetlights is when we were trying to save money.
Mm-hmm. That was, the goal of this was to determine which ones could be actually turned off.
Right, and my recollection is we turned a lot off and had a lot of complaints from the public because some of our streets are very dark when you travel down them.
Well, I don't recall that at all because the reason, and I don't want to get into the weeds with you on this either, but, so the idea behind that policy, according to our public safety department heads, was to keep those on where there were dangerous spots, intersections, curves, places where they had records of, you know, multiple accidents happening. There was no intent here to make things just darker for the sake of making it darker or dangerous.
No, I know, I understand that, but I'm just not sure we're in the same dire financial straits we were in then, now.
Well, it doesn't hurt to save money at any point, does it? I mean, really? You were suggesting LED lights.
Exactly, we're, but I think, you know...
Ms. Marone.
That's fine. Will you, Mr. Chair? Just for the sake of time, because there's so many good ideas here, I'm just going to share my philosophy on these goals and objectives. I think I would like to see us continue on discussions that we've already had in terms of the bigger picture by agreeing to Sarah's idea of the police station building committee, the community center feasibility committee, and then Ron's, continue to assess the viability of regionalization of town departments and monitor town finances. Those are the four that I think we've been working diligently on as a team and I think it's the bigger picture items and, gee, we can certainly talk about doing a streetlight policy during the year, we just don't have to have it as one of our major objectives and the same, you see what I'm saying?
I agree with you, Helen. One thing, just make a, just change the phraseology a little bit on the establishment of police station, but once the strategic plan has been completed.
Right.
So let me, a couple of things here is, I think energy efficiency is a topic, a policy discussion, a goal and objective, and I think if you just leave it broad like that, that's one of the things that we want to have the new operations and maintenance department take a look at, is where are there opportunities for more energy efficiency initiatives around town? Whether that's getting rid of these old antiquated lights in here, which you know take 10 minutes to warm up, drawing electricity, they use more than most streetlights.
And some of them don't ever turn off.
And they're different colors that are on here. So my point being is I think that if we just task that being something to look at townwide, that would, you know, identify, I think, kind of conceptualize what people...
And how did you phrase that?
Energy efficiency.
Energy, yeah, townwide energy efficiency.
I think that would be...
I like that.
We add that to our goal?
Yeah.
So that would be like five?
Well, that would be one.
No, the one, but I'm saying, but in conjunction with the other four that Helen mentioned.
Well, let me just go on to, I think, what Helen's mentioned. You know, we're already moving forward with the strategic plan and we're doing this both for the COA and we're doing it also for the police. So I think before we start to look at setting up any committees or doing anything like that, again, I'd recommend we follow the same process we did before for the other two projects because they've worked well, but let's not get the cart before the horse on that. Let them go in their natural progression and then those would eventually happen this year.
Well, that's why, that's why I said, add the phrase, you know, once the strategic studies have been completed.
Right.
And that would be pertaining to both of those items.
And I just want to make it clear to the residents that part of the idea of establishing a community center feasibility community also included council on aging as well to discuss, you know...
That's what it says here.
Yeah.
I know, Sarah, but I didn't...
A new community center that includes a council on aging.
I understand that, but I didn't state that earlier, so I'm just making it clear to the public.
Just for the TV audience, for our Nielsen ratings.
What is the, this is the first I'm hearing of a community center.
That was, that was talked about at great length in the master plan discussion.
And they talked about trying to house the COA within the community center?
So, so the idea, if you take a look at the master plan, you'll see that the idea was to have a space that was broader than just a council on aging, not that, not that they don't need their own space, they would have their own space within it. Now, we don't know if this is feasible, this is why Michael's suggesting that we do a feasibility study makes sense. But the idea was to have a place where all ages could go and within that, a space specifically for seniors, where it's, you know, the whole thing is handicapped accessible, it's really good for kids and seniors to get to know each other, like that. It's, and it comes from this past, this master plan that we finished this year.
How does that fit in with what we're doing so far with the working of the board of directors and the COA?
Well, I mean, the need is, is that we need a COA upgrade and that's what we need. We don't have a community center. I mean, we have Y-PAC that does stuff at the school, we've got two elementary schools, we've got one, two, three, four, four gyms currently, we're going to go down to three gyms with the new school. So we have a lot of recreation activity and it's just trying to assess what the needs are of the town. Now, again, you've got Duxbury that has a community center, you know, you've got some of the more affluent towns that are building these, these larger things and it's trying to identify, you know, can Carver, and this is what Sarah's saying, can Carver afford one of those from a feasibility standpoint? And if so, what should it be? But the real driver is, is COA. I mean, that's the driver that the town needs right now.
We've got $25,000 for a feasibility study?
For COA.
Specific, it could not be broadened to include the idea of locating a COA within a community center?
It could, but before you even get into that, you know, how many millions of dollars are you talking? And then is that an override?
Well, that's the whole idea of feasibility is you don't know what the cost would be.
That's right, that's right. And just a little minor point, just so people remember, that Y-PAC isn't actually part of the town, it's its own entity. So, I mean, you do have after-school programs for kids at the schools and so on. This is, this was a proposal, if you take a look at the current addition of the master plan, that was come up, the committee came up with it, but also members of the public as a place where all kinds of, and not just, you know, fun and games for kids, so, so that's why feasibility is a good word.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can live with the idea of putting a committee together to study the potential locations and so forth, basically to assist with what you've already started, so, and if it can, but really I would hope that we could, that 25,000 could look at both things, but I guess I would want to emphasize that I want to make sure the COA is taken care of.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I like the idea of considering a community center, but we may...
I don't think anybody here disagrees with that at all. I think that, you know, they are a priority.
Yeah, I think what's missing is the COA is a tangible thing, we know what that is. The community center is what is the community center? What are the space needs for that? Where's the town deficient in those space needs in order to quantify what a community center is? That's what there really isn't much...
How elaborate did the master plan get in terms of describing?
I don't remember that specifically.
What would constitute a community center?
I think it was pretty vague, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, there's a lot of latitude in there.
And I just, I don't know if this is the time or place, but I wanted to point out that the parcel of land on which currently exists the town community playground is actually a 13-acre parcel of land. It doesn't look that way because it's treed, that's just...
Yes, it's the old...
We have wells there too, though, that have...
The well radius only goes so far, there's a lot of land that could be built.
The old, basically, it's the old roebi property.
No, the playground's built on the old, yes. But there's land that goes down, way down Center Street as well.
You'd have to be careful though about traffic with the playground there, that you didn't have...
But that would all be part, have to be figured out from the feasibility, so in theory, do we have a...
All right, I can live with the energy efficiency and then establishing the community center feasibility committee. The police station, it's sort of like we're following suit, I guess, and, you know, they're sort of doing their thing, so I don't know.
But again, that's after the feasibility study for the police station is done, for the whole police department is done. So, you know, just so long as that's in there, I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
And then continuing, continuing to assessing the viability of regionalization, both Department and Town Services, and continue to monitor town finances with emphasis on the financial management policies.
For me, I think one of the most important things is just the 40, the Route 44 development project, making sure that we help keep that on track. That's probably one of the biggest things that can assist this town go...
I agree with you, but really at this point, there's not a lot we can do anymore. Now it's really...
I'm thinking more of just that we pay attention and focus on it.
Yes, I agree with that, but it's, as far as being able to do anything with it, I don't think there's much that could come before us.
So we got energy efficiency, the community center COA, and the police station, was there anything else?
I think just basically those four that Helen outlined, plus the energy.
Plus the energy, you're, the, continue to monitor town finances with emphasis on the financial management policies.
Okay.
So it's these four plus energy efficiency.
You look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I just, I can't wrap my arms around what a community center is because there's no description to what that is, so it's nebulous. It's like, we know we need a council on aging, we know we need a police station. What is a community center beyond a house for the COA?
Yeah, I share your concerns on that, but I also, by the same token, I understand Sarah's really holding true to the master plan. I wish we had somebody from the master plan.
I don't, I think the idea is basically putting a committee together and that the committee is involved with looking at the feasibility for the COA and that part of looking at that is also, does it make sense to involve a community center with it? So it's not, you know, it, after the, after we get, after that committee gets into the weeds, it may turn out that that's given available funding, not something that we can move forward, but...
What you said is different because you, what you just said is the driver is the COA and while the COA is...
I think everyone agreed that the COA is the, takes priority.
Well, then how about you change the position, have council on aging as well as a potential cause of a new community center?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That way, the COA is the driving force, not the community center.
As long as it's clear that in the master plan, the idea was that they'd be under the same roof.
But that's fine.
Right, if feasible, but again, they were, they were spitballing and didn't really know how feasible that was, so...
Correct.
But that way, that way it keeps the COA as the driving force of the evaluation.
Make a motion to approve those five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, no no's, so we're five...
Send a cup of coffee coming my way tonight.
Yeah, five, five, zero. Those are the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. Now for the Town Administrator Goals. Are you all caught up to us, Helen?
I'm good.
Okay, I just want to make sure. All right, Town Administrator. Can I just talk about a couple of the things that Helen put in? Work with the school committee to have their employees have a bifurcated contract. That's not something we can really get into or...
True.
Because that's, that's going to be through negotiations and, you know, there'll be the negotiation team and then there is the school committee and the town administrator's representative to the school committee to put in input on that, but as far as having it be a town administrator function, they are well aware that that's something we would like to see happen.
Thank you, I agree.
And continuing assessing possible merging of departments, IT is, that's done.
Yeah, that's done.
So I'm just thinking, you know, we can just save a little bit there.
Yep.
I do love number one, continued focus on financial sustainability of the town.
It's kind of blending with others.
Right.
That is saying the same thing.
David, Sarah, Ron, anybody?
Ron is saying, continue assessing viability of regionalization of Department Town Services, work with Board of Assessors and Board of Health to review if there are opportunities. So we're all thinking on the same...
Yeah, regionalization, I think, is key. I mean, we just saw that we're regionalizing the Director of the Housing Authority.
Right.
And I, and it indicates that... And I, and they, it indicates that smaller towns are doing more and more of that sort of thing where they're either consolidating departments or working with other communities for regionalizing.
And I also, I also like Sarah's in there too, you know, on the prioritize effective communication. You know, that's, it kind of goes without saying.
Yeah.
I mean, because it's, it's part of the job, but I think it's, it doesn't hurt to have it out there.
Yeah, I think the regionalization should probably be a definite number one, especially after going and hearing the state and how they felt about Carver. And they gave us an education on the importance of regionalization when you're a smaller community. In terms of thinking through how many funds are we going to be getting from the state, it doesn't seem like they're going to be that empathetic with us if we don't at least put these options on the table.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, so I think that should be at number one.
I think the, the other thing I feel strongly about, if we're, if, if it's inappropriate for us as a board to monitor and assist in the progress of the Route 44 development, I would like Michael to be playing a major role in tracking and moving forward.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Dave, you just, yay, shake your head up and down?
Yeah, right now, I'm, I was just struggling with the regionalization. Is that, is that the overall plan for the town?
Well, just where it makes sense. Just look at opportunities if they arise.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't, doesn't mean we're going to merge every single department to work with every other town.
Yeah.
But just when opportunities arise or where there's joint purchasing. Regionalization doesn't have to be authority. It could, it could be just ways to save money by joint purchasing agreements or something.
Yeah, okay.
And also put us ahead of the curve because I have a funny feeling, as budgets continue to get tighter and tighter, that the state is going to start offering incentives.
Yep.
Or not, it's either incentives or put the hammer down, say, you got, people have to go ahead and start doing more things together because we can't afford to give each town individual pockets of money all the time. So it just puts us a little bit ahead of the curve, I hope, I think.
Pretty much kind of starting that little conversation when we were having the discussion with them. So, yeah, it's not to definitely do it, it's more to assess certain opportunities that may come up, whether it's going to be viable for us to do it and if it makes sense.
We'll get the say on that, I'm assuming, because I get kind of nervous when somebody else makes the financial decision for our town and whether it's proportionally accurate, you know.
Well, I sort of have the same problem with.
Somebody says, I need 10,000 for a town that's got an income of 100,000 and we got.
Yeah, sort of like the Carver, Marion, Wareham refuse.
Funny how that came into my head was.
And also, you know, the folks, uh, Rochester.
Yeah.
You know, I wish, I knew more about their teacher negotiations, contracts coming up. Because, could you reach out to somebody? Because someone was supposed to reach out to us. And I'd rather have us reach out to them since we haven't heard, because I'd love to have some input on that one.
I talked to their superintendent about two weeks ago.
It's a funny, broad, broad goal on that one, too. It was kind of, how are you going to, you know, tangible at the end of the year to say, you know, okay, I looked at the regionalization. Nope, nothing worked out, you know, so it's, the goal has to be a little bit more specific in nature, I think, and a little, um, something that could be measured on. And I don't, I didn't quite know how to measure that in my head while you guys were talking about it, so.
And we've done a tremendous amount of regionalization on a local scale. We're trying to work with other towns that we're still in the process of working through some of that.
Maybe.
That's already happened, so, you know, I think what Ron's talking about is not necessarily that there's really going to be many things happening this year. It's more like always keep your eye open, so when an opportunity does present, you look at it.
It's a goal. What I'm saying is that at the end of the goal, at the end of the year, you've got to say, okay, I looked at six, you know, it has to be an operational platform. I looked at six, five of them were no good. One I need to look at and get a little bit deeper into it. Something tangible.
Yeah, it's not doing it for the sake of doing it. If it doesn't make sense, you don't do it.
It also has to be measurable, so we'll know whether that goal was, was a smart goal.
Or, or if we've had towns, part of that would be have towns, other communities reached out to us to go ahead and get into some regionalization type things.
We were going to keep the effective communication, is that correct? That was going to be one of them?
May I?
You may.
Thank, thank you. In conjunction with the board of selectmen objectives that we agreed to in terms of the police station and the council on aging, et cetera, would it make sense to agree to Ron's idea of providing an analysis of projected construction and timetable for a new police station and council on aging, including cost impact on?
That's, as I look at that now, that's almost something we could just ask Michael to make sure he includes in his capital projection for 2000.
FY19.
FY19.
All right.
Because that's really all I was after, is just trying to submit it in there and show us where, as we look out ahead, it's going to show up. So it's not, you know, it's a goal he'd be able to achieve probably in about, you know, half a day.
All right.
The, the other one I thought would be important was the, the hu, on the, on the human resource department. I mean, we're, we're still working on coming up with evaluations and so forth, right, aren't we, for?
Where are we on that now?
Still electric.
So we have hired a consultant, the Collin Center. And we have met with the union employees and they have agreed to an evaluation process. And tomorrow, we are meeting with the department heads to train them on rolling out the department, the evaluation performance review process.
Outstanding.
This year will be a soft run for full implementation next year, but part of the, getting the union buy-in was to, to run through, if you will. This is what it's going to be without impacts. Let's do that this year, but then next year, hopefully, there'll be positive impacts. But there will be impacts, one way or the other.
So if they've already started this real deep groundwork, we probably don't need to put that.
Yeah, it, it's a continu, continuation of the education and development. But that's great news to hear, Helen. I'm very happy to hear that.
Great job.
At, at this point, I have the prioritize effective communication.
Yep.
Continuing assessing viability of regionalization, prioritize human resource departments.
Yep.
And the town administrator monitoring and assisting in the progress of Route 44. I'm satisfied with those four, if everyone else is.
I'd still like to see personally review, you know, a constant review or a periodic review of reorganized departments.
Yeah, that makes sense in light of that it's, that's there. I could live with that. I'll make a motion to recommend those five as the town administrator goals.
And what about the prioritize effective communication one?
We, we add it as.
Okay, I just didn't hear it.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, these being the town administrator goals and objectives for FY18? Or no, calendar year, is it calendar year 17 for the, no, FY, close enough.
FY.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero. Five zero. Yay. All right. Plymouth County Advisory Board Representative for FY18. Hi, Helen.
Hi, I enjoyed it. I have no problem staying on it.
Make a motion, reappoint.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please. Aye, opposed, that's unanimous.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for voting.
Okay, we also have the annual 2017-18 appointments for positions, including election workers. See list is posted at the town clerks or the board of selectmen offices. This is something we voted on actually in June, but we had to revote it because we did not have the language. See the list as posted at the town clerks or board of selectmen offices.
Make a motion to approve the positions and, and appointments?
Um, there, there needs to be one change.
Can we have a second first before we get into the discussion?
Second.
Second, okay, now, discussion.
So, um, under South Shore Community Action Council, you guys appointed, okay. So Bernadette Hemingway is, there should be two of those appointments because she represents, I think she's called the community representative on the South Shore Community Action Council. And I am the selectman's representative for the town of Carver in Plymouth.
I'll make that motion with that amendment.
Second.
So we're adding, it would be adding you to the South Shore Community Action Council.
Because Bernadette and I serve two sep, two different functions there.
Is that also a three-year term?
I honestly don't know.
Isn't that, we just voted it, it would know.
Like in December, yeah.
Yeah.
With no term.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, amended motion and a second. Further discussion?
These are for the terms ending June 30th.
Oh, I see, so that's why Bernadette's, okay.
Yeah, a different term.
Never mind.
I reamend my amended motion to my original motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Moving on to Mr. Robertson was bored. He came up with a very good question and he's retired and looking for things to do. So we're looking to have him be one of our members of the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
That's exciting, driving around.
Do I hear a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to.
It won't be a waste of time.
Have a motion?
Second.
And second, discussion?
I, I'd just like to extend a thanks to Bob Tinkham, who served in this role for a number of years, for his service to the town.
Thank you, Bob. We miss you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor having Dave Robertson be taken?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, you didn't hear me. I want to thank Dave for doing this. I think you're going to be terrific.
You're right where you belong.
No, that's not what I mean.
Brand new little sports car down there.
I think there are a lot of things that we don't understand about this district. And I, I am interested to hear what your persevering self comes up with.
I agree, because we've had, really, we have never had, or at least since I've been elected to this board, anybody from that organization come to us and tell us what the heck's going on. And I'm looking forward to Dave being able to keep the board fully informed of decisions and policies they're coming up with. So, that being said, we have a motion that's been seconded to have Dave Robertson take Mr. Tinkham's spot on the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, no. Five zero.
Helen, do you want to do a little update on this one?
No, I'm going to let you do that one, because I'm going to get mad.
Um, just very briefly, is the, the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, that's a mouthful. They have sent the town of Carver a bill in the amount of $57,000 due to a budget shortfall. And this is the first time in probably close to a decade the town has had to pay money because they receive tipping fees from CMA's going into their, into the, to the landfill here in, in Carver. And those tipping fees, we're actually able to keep them very flush in cash. But those tipping fees are going down because the landfill's filling up. As a result of that, they're now trying to pass this expense on to the town. And we have a document that was agreed to back in the 1970s that said the town would contribute to its fair share. But I emphasize fair share because that's what I don't have documentation on. I have been requesting from Ray Pickles, who is the executive director of the organization, to provide, you know, some detailed financial backup. And have yet to receive that because I, I want to understand where the money is coming from and going to because they're spending over $554,000 is what they're projecting to spend this year. Again, where is that going to? I have yet to receive that information, but because I have refused to pay the bill to do that, they sent, they had their lawyer, and this is a public body, actually send a demand for that amount of money. I have shared that with K and P and they are properly responding to that. What, what bothers them to me is that when I look at the ratios of the percentage of tonnage compared to, you know, Marion, you know, we have a population that's just over double Marion. And just like Wareham has a population that's almost double ours. But the percentage that they're charging Carver compared to some of the other communities is not in that same proportion. And what I have since heard from, from many people is that some of the disposal companies that pick up garbage in, in Carver and get a reduced rate or no, or, or, or get that fee waived may also be picking up garbage in other communities. And then when they dump the garbage, saying it's from Carver and therefore benefiting from these reduced fees. I've talked to many people about that and they said, and I said, this is a rumor I've heard. And they said, oh, no, it's not a rumor, it's happening. And so even Ray Pickles admitted that that has happened in the past. And again, I've wanted to give more clarification as to how they're going to stop that. They were supposed to bring in more people to oversee that this summer, but then apparently didn't have the funding to monitor that. So if there's no monitoring and this is an acceptable practice, then I feel, as your town administrator, that we may be subsidizing other towns' garbage pickup. And that's what I have a problem with. And therefore, until we get appropriate numbers, I feel it's in the town's best interest not to pay for that until we get a proper accounting of that. So that's kind of where I am on this. And yes, they've sent a legal subpoena that we should pay this and they're right. If they can provide documentation, then I'd say absolutely we should pay it. Now, do we have this budgeted? No, because when we started our budget in the fall, we didn't incorporate this in there, so we'd have to pay for it out of one-time funds. When we find out what the appropriate amount is, at the same token, we need to also, given if this is going to become the future and we're going to have a $60,000 or $100,000 bill every year, then we need to take a harder look at our, our disposal stickers and figure out how that cost is allocated to those stickers is really where the funding would come from on a regular basis. So, again, a lot of concerns. And then the chairman and I, we called Mr. Pickles, the chairman, the other day because we saw a, a meeting notice that said on August 30th, there will be a dinner meeting at the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District Commission on Wednesday, August 30th, at 6:00 PM at the home of Ray and Diane Pickles at 29 Cove Street in Marion. Please call, here's his cellphone number by noon Tuesday. If you and your wife will attend, we will not conduct district business. So that also just raised a bunch of red flags as well. It's, why are you having a public meeting if you're not going to have, conduct district business? So.
And he did tell us if we wanted to come, we, we, he'd find us some room on the porch, but there'd be no guarantee we'd be fed.
There was only room for six people on the porch.
Right.
Oh, dear goodness.
So, in any case, you know, when I asked for all the detailed information, again and there, and he pleaded ignorant, but then said it was too much stuff and he was going on vacation and wouldn't be able to get back to me for two weeks.
He also said it would take three months, I believe, was the timeframe, to try to even give us that information.
Right.
I have a real problem when you have this agency that's basically saying they're broke and we have to give them money, yet they're not telling us where they're spending the money.
There's no facts.
And they're also assuming that everyone on the district committee has a wife. Some of them might have husbands.
Significant others.
Spouse, or yes, or something.
But that's, you know, that, I, I really, and the fact that the.
As a public entity, that's a.
No, I agree. But the fact that, you know, if you look at what Marion is being asked to pay and what Wareham is, the ratio is, Wareham should probably be paying, we're paying part of what I would think would be Wareham's share because it's based on population.
Yeah.
So that is why I am so glad that we now have Mr. Robertson on there because he brought, also brought up, like, okay, they're, they're recycling, they're getting money for recycling. How much money are they getting for recycling items that are brought to the, to the center? So, which I thought was an excellent point on your part, so. The bill, you know, if they can prove to, show us and give them the information that Michael has requested, which to me is perfectly reasonable request, I'll be, no problem, us, the average, will have to pay it. But until we get that information and they're basically just stonewalling right now.
A little piece of information missing.
Yes, sir.
Because, no, I mean, on their part, because they know how much to charge us. But they can't tell us, you know, they can't give us that information. They know how much to send the bill for.
Yeah.
But they can't share that. There's, there's just a little piece of missing.
Ah, it's huge. And you can't pay an invoice unless you have the backup as to like what you're paying for. I mean.
Right.
We'd be as negligent as they are if we paid that bill without having. We'd be as negligent as they are if we paid that bill without having any...
Without questioning it.
Without questioning and having any facts to back it up.
You did right.
It could all be legit.
It could be.
And, but it is a cash business to some extent, which is why I just want to be able to trace the money and follow it to make sure it's all going until we're paying our appropriate share.
Any further questions?
No.
All right. I am going to, because I'm a caring individual, I'm going to ask if you allow me to take the update on the health insurance GIC plan, move that to after our next meeting because Ms. Hewens wouldn't be able to participate in that. So that way we can, she wouldn't have to go away and then come back. So, does anybody have a problem with that?
Not at all.
All right. So that being the case, minutes, licenses, topics not necessarily anticipated. I do have one that was unanticipated, just came in. It's an application to be appointed to a vacancy in committee and board from Tim Blanchard for B Shaw Road, and he wants to be, serve on the Old Colony School Committee. If you want to read his whole application, I think most of us know Tim. So your pleasure on that.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Right out.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero in favor. Thank you. Minutes from...
Motion to approve the minutes of June 27th?
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have one correction.
Okay.
At the very end, the last page, it says, "Vote 301. Hewens abstained and left the meeting." That should be vote 300. Hewens recused and left the meeting.
May I adjust my motion to reflect that amendment?
So that's on June 27th meeting, last page.
Okay. Motion, amended motion, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of June 27th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now for the minutes of the joint meeting with the school committee on 6/29.
Move to approve?
Go here a second.
Second. Sorry.
And a second. Any discussion? Were we all at that meeting?
No.
Okay, so...
Alan, Ron, Sarah, and Helen.
So all, both of us who were there?
I wasn't there.
It says you were. June 29th? Are you sure?
I don't think I was.
I thought you were.
Was I? Wasn't there another one after that?
No.
Oh, that was downstairs, right?
Right.
Okay, I was there. I apologize.
No, that, this meeting was up here.
Yeah.
I'm going to trust that I was there. I just don't remember.
And you think you were there as well?
It's late.
I think so.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Everybody approved.
Make a motion to approve the one-day special request of Katie Kane?
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the one-day special request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. All right. Now we will go to the update of the Public Employee Committee's plan for health insurance change to GIC-2.
Next meeting is October 17th.
Oh, next meeting is October, after a poll of the members of the board, October 17th.
Okay.
November 7th in 12/5.
I just want to get through the next meeting.
Are we moving towards a monthly meeting?
For this time of the year, then once we get into the budget season, we'll...
We'll go back to twice.
All right. So October 17th, November 7th, and December 5th.
In mid-October, we'll probably then schedule our joint meeting with the school committee and our board.
Sounds good.
May I ask if this executive session includes discussion about...
This is not executive session.
We're not having, there's no executive session.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's, see, that's why I did it this way. All right. As you know, we as a board, you want me to wait till you leave or you can still listen?
Why am I leaving? I thought you said we're not going into executive session.
No, but...
No, but now we're discussing the health thing, do you...
Oh, thank you.
Thought we were doing that at next meeting.
Be clear, Alan.
I thought I was.
I was confused because I thought he did say after the next meeting.
Yeah.
No. I'm sorry.
You said.
Well...
But he said he's taken out of order in the agenda after next meeting.
Oh! Thank you, Mr. Milonowski, for understanding what I was saying. All right. So the board went ahead, and I'm going to try to do this...
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yep. Thank you for attending.
Just wait a second. I'm trying to help out here. Powering down.
I'm going to take your water. Can you copy that?
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. So we voted to go ahead and go with a GIC-3 with a three-year... What's the word I've been looking for? Am I going...
Three-year mitigation.
Mitigation. Through negotiations, back and forth, arguments. They did not like that so much. So it went up to the state to a mediator. And what came out of the mediation meeting with Mr. Milonowski, the mediator, and two representatives of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, not any of our union local people, that they came back and were cited to go to GIC-2, lock it in for two years with no mitigation. For one year because they can't, the mediator won't even entertain anything on mitigation for more than one year. At the time, they said, apparently, but from my discussions with Mr. Milonowski, that, oh, yes, all the other unions agreed to this. We had to take them at their word. And they have, all the union representatives have signed on to this agreement to go to that. So what we're left with now is we can either vote to approve going to the GIS-2 for two years with no mitigation or we can vote against it and still go with our GIS-3 with the three-year mitigation. That's where we stand. So I'd like to hear a motion and second for discussion on accepting the GIS-2 that's been presented.
So it's really the motion to reject because it's already been done. You'd have to reject it, not accept it.
All right. Joe, yeah, but yeah, let's start off with, I would entertain a motion to reject. You're making that motion?
Yes.
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
Could you walk me through it again, please?
Yes, I'll be happy to.
Slowly, please.
And it's what I'm, I was very disappointed with Mr. Milonowski reported this back to me.
Oh, I thought you said...
I know. I was like, wow.
Pause there was not the right time to help.
When we first came up with going with the GIS-3, but the three-year mitigation, it was to go ahead and protect the lower-paid employees of the town, specifically clerical. Some of the DPW, police, dispatchers, because this impacts them all.
Bus drivers.
Bus drivers. Capt, cafeteria workers. You know, the one people that, so that's why we had that three-years worth of mitigation in there. And then when I found out that, I knew Mr. Michael was going up for this meeting and it was my understanding that there were going to be representatives from the PEC committee, which they were there. But then it went into a separate discussion with just Michael and two members of the Massachusetts Teachers Association. With the...
No locals also.
No locals. Just Massachusetts Teachers Association. And I can't stress that hard enough. You know, so that's who was in this negotiation with the mediator. No town representative. And they came back and basically said they can live with the GIC-2. And they forgave, they said, "We don't care about the mitigation. We're fine. You don't have to have that." So I, I cannot accept something that goes ahead and to me, basically gives the short stick to our lower-paid employees without any mitigation. So I would, just, you know, it's my opinion, I will vote to go ahead and reject this offer. And by rejecting it, we automatically, it automatically goes back again with our original GIC-3 with a three-year mitigation. And it'll go back up to state mediation again.
I absolutely support that recommendation, Alan.
Mr. Clark, you seem deep in thought.
I'm just still trying to grasp, so this went to mediation at the state level?
Mr. Milonowski.
So what happens is, you know, the selectmen put their proposal together for GIC-3 with the year of mitigation. Again, Alan, everything else...
And the other clerical and so forth, they were all on board with it?
That's correct because it was going to provide anyone with a bifurcated contract was going to get the additional three years. Everybody got one year, which is required by law, but the selectmen were offering to do more than one year, do three years for any group that's going to bifurcate it with the sole purpose of making sure that those that were of lower means would be able to tap into this mitigation fund when they had copays or prescriptions that go up. And what, and how the PEC works is everyone has a weighted vote. So the teachers have 49% of the vote. But the teachers' union also represents the parish, and the parish had 9% of the vote in the town. So in essence, the teachers have 58% of the PEC vote. So the PEC, through a democratic process, voted to have the teachers represent the PEC. Again, the teachers have 58% of the vote. So that's who was in the discussion.
But why were these discussions taking place?
Because when you, once the PEC as a whole did not agree with the selectmen's proposal, because again...
58% of the PEC.
That's correct. The majority, democratic process. Can I emphasize it? Democratic process. That's how the votes went. They didn't agree with it. They then went to the state for mediation. Now, what the mediator is, you have someone representing the PEC, someone representing the town, and then an impartial person from the state. The impartial person from the state can only look at year one. They really couldn't review or opine on our additional three years because that's not within their jurisdiction or their parameters to look at. So in that discussion, the teachers, the state teachers' union came back and said that they've met with all of the bargaining parties and all the bargaining parties want to go to a GIC-2 versus a GIC-3. They wanted to have a three-year lock, that no change is what happened, and they're willing to give up their 25% mitigation.
Moving to a GIC-2 is still a shift from where we're at currently?
Correct. And the savings for the GIC-2 overall was about $225,000. So we would have had to put $56,000 into a mitigation fund.
What's the savings with the GIC-3?
GIC-3 was double that. It would have been $114 in the mitigation fund or overall savings, $458. And when they came back to that, and again, they stated that this was agreed to by all the bargaining groups. It's like, this is what the town...
So it was represented by the PEC majority that was representing, by the people that were representing the PEC, that 100% of the PEC was an agreement to go to GIC-2?
Yes, with no mitigation, but they wanted a three-year lock. And we said, well, you know...
With no mitigation fund?
With no mitigation. And basically, when we came back to them, and it was Tim, Tim Zeston and myself were there representing the town, as I said, well, you know, the objective of the selectmen is to make sure that there's funds available for those in harm's way. They said, "We don't even want a mitigation fund. If we were to do a mitigation fund, we just want a payment holiday. So everybody just pays half their health insurance for that month and everybody's treated the same." And we're like, "Yeah, but the intent is to get to the lower-paid employees. They didn't want to have any part of that." And that was really, I think, what got Alan upset and was, you know, concerning to me is that we're trying to do this and trying to, you know, back up 12 steps. Healthcare is broken in the country. We know that. The service is still there. The cost is broken. So changes have to be made. You guys know you have to make changes in order to be financially solvent going forward and sustainable. Therefore, these are the changes that need to happen. And if you're going to make these changes, you want it to protect the lower-paid people who may have families who may need these additional services. Therefore, the mitigation fund was three years. You guys had the right plan for doing that. The Massachusetts Teachers Association, that was not what they wanted. They wanted, again, to have a one-year, I mean, a one-month holiday. So everyone was treated the same versus those that were benefited there. So when they came back to us, again, they wanted three years with no changes, no mitigation.
For GIC-2 instead of three.
For GIC-2, and they would accept that. And we came back to them and says, "Well, we're not, we're certainly, that's not what our intent was because we wanted the mitigation fund. But if that's what everyone's saying, and you're saying everybody's saying that, well, then so be it. But we're not going to agree to a three-year lockout. You know, we'll agree to a two, knowing that in two years, you can come forward and implement GIC-3. And there's nothing they can do about that because you have the right to implement that. They have the right to get 25% mitigation fund back. They rejected their 25%."
Also, on September, beginning of the first day of the school year, there was, the superintendent, they had a kind of a get-together at the school with students, teachers, and, you know, basically getting ready for the new school. And also, the president and vice president of the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver, President Tom Pinto, and I, he had some things that I kind of agreed with. Mr. Pinto stated, "Educators never stop looking for creative ideas," Pinto said, "to engage students in the learning process." He said, "The EPEC thanks teachers for their professionalism and devotion to teaching to both students and families." I thought that was a great thing if he'd just stopped there. However, two paragraphs down, he then, he said they went to add, want to add, two Massachusetts Teachers Association workshops. And then locally, the EPEC has fought against layoffs, which they did, and that's, you know, that's what their job is. And this summer have pushed back against insurance changes in Carver, he said. He said, "The union will be working hard as a team during negotiations for a new contract by working as a team. As we face upcoming contract negotiations, please remember to participate. You know, everybody's voice should be heard." Ms. Johnson, who is the vice president, added, "With all these attacks on education, we need more than ever to work together to continue to transform our union so that all members have the courage to speak for what is right, what is right for our children and for our profession." I think I've got a problem with them basically crowing, that they push back and basically they're saying, I'm not trying to put words in Mr. Pinto's mouth, but it certainly seems like, you know, they're going to fight for the teachers, which that's what a union's supposed to do. But my problem is when they are sacrificing for the lower-paid employees when we try to come up with some protection for them and it was, basically said, "We're not worried about that." Mr. Clark?
Part of the, what's been winding through this whole conversation that we've been ongoing for the last couple of years is we are looking out to the future of the town in our long-term financial obligations. And one of the reasons that we've been working with local, with the unions in town to get these bifurcated contracts where new hires are going to be coming in at 50% healthcare reimbursement as opposed to the current 75%, is looking to the long term, looking to the health and welfare of the town of Carver, not next year, not three years from now, but 20 and 30 years from now. And when we came up with this idea of, or when we discussed this idea of moving to the GIC-3 and having the three-year mitigation fund available to the unions, it was with recognition that those unions were working with us to help us relieve the long-term liabilities that we're facing. And I feel very strongly that we should, that there's no reason we should break away from that policy and we should demonstrate our appreciation to the unions that have been working with us. And, you know, I would agree with the chairman that we reject this proposal.
We... Robertson?
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of that. I always, when you're at the table with anything, whether it's union, whether it's any negotiation, there has to be some give and take. And just to outright say, "This is what we are going to do," you know, whether it's a... tactic of negotiations or whether it's not, it's, it's just like Ron said, it's just not, it's not developing a future plan. It's, they're solving a today problem today. And we're here, I think you said it perfectly, is that we're trying to develop something that our kids are going to have to live with, and I would prefer to stick with our chairman on his recommendation. I think it's atrocious that they won't even work with us.
I already had, said I highly recommend supporting...
All right, we have a motion, uh, a wayman, Mr. Milonowski wants to...
And, you know, I just would have picked up, what Dave David said is that, you know, when we got into this arbitration mediation, it was clear that the state arbitrator was not going to entertain the multi-year mitigation fund. So the choice we were left with was go with the GIC three...
Without a mitigation fund.
No, with, GIC three with mitigation, and again, I've read you the numbers, what they would be, or take GIC two with no mitigation, and it was the employee, and it was the teachers' union's plan. So we looked at it and says, well, it's their plan, they're representing, that everybody's on board with this, and they're not going to do mitigation, well, okay, let's go with that, because there's a consensus there. Knowing for well that that didn't include your three-year mitigation funds. And it's, and if we go back to them, what you're going to be left with is a GIC three with one-year mitigation, and then the question is what type of mitigation? Is it everybody gets a payment holiday, or is it there's a mitigation fund that's used by those that need it?
When we discussed it, it was always a case of who needs it?
Who needs it? Absolutely, but I want to tell you that that was up in the air, which way that was going to go. Because I couldn't read that, nor could Tim, figure out which way that was going to go.
Yep.
So, you know, again, we negotiated what we thought was in the best interest of the town, giving those parameters that are there, and, you know, should you vote to reject this, I just wanted you to understand what the next steps are, we go back to them, and, you know, it'll be a GIC three, there's no doubt about that. What type of mitigation, you know, whether it's the mitigation fund or whether it's a payment holiday, is still up in the air. I mean, you guys believe it should be the mitigation for those in need, absolutely correct. I don't think we can get the three years through them.
I don't, I don't understand when you're looking at an opportunity to go to GIC three and basically be made whole for three years versus going to GIC two, which is going to cost you more money and you get no relief for, if you happen to suffer some large bills during that two-year period.
Well, the only group that hasn't agreed to the bifurcated contract is the teachers would have 58% of the vote. So for 42% of the people, logic dictates what you said, but since the three-year mitigation is tied into those with the bifurcated contract, it wouldn't apply to the teachers unless they wanted to do a bifurcated contract.
But it has to be pointed out in fairness that all the unions have signed on to the agreement.
That's correct.
So I'm not going to go any further on that, that's, it is what it is.
I move the vote, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded to reject going to the GIS two. All those in favor of rejecting that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That's four zero to reject.
And nothing's changed with the original policy?
That's correct. I don't, I haven't heard anybody wanting to change what our original offer was. I do want to thank both Michael and Tim, I think they did a good job negotiating, I think they had a firm grasp of what we're trying to accomplish, and that we did want to go ahead and try to protect the lower-paid employees of this town. And I want to thank you for that and wish you luck, because you're going to be back up there again.
And you've done a lot too, Alan.
Well, I didn't, I didn't do any of the negotiations on that one, and it was the board that came up, you know, decided, you know, that we have to do something that saves the town some money, but also go ahead and provide protection for the lower-paid employees, which would be bus drivers.
Two colors come out.
So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So second?
I've had a first and a second, any discussion? Nope. And those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.
Thank you.